Before we begin every meeting, we like to stand and pray for guidance. Those who would like to join us, please do so. Mr. Duncan will lead us.
Let's pray. Father Lord, we come to you tonight. We thank you, Lord, just for another day of life that you blessed us with. Or we thank you for the opportunity we have, Lord, just to serve. I pray the night that you'll just give, Lord, the board direction, wisdom. I pray that you'll continue to bless this county, bless this school district, and I pray that we'll keep you first in all that we do. Lord, we love you. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, thank y'all. At this point, we'll call it a order. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Chair, Chairman Rogers, one thing we would like to delete, Item E, Discussion of School Nutrition Contract Rollover. That will be a part of the consent agenda next month, but that was erroneously added to this agenda.
Okay. Contract rollover, Discussion Item E has been scratched. Take a motion to approve as amended.
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Public comments. Ms. Bender?
The agenda for each regular monthly meeting includes a time period for citizens to address the Board of Education through public comment. Prior to each meeting, a form is made available for any individual or group to indicate a desire to address the Board of Education and the topic to be addressed. A three-minute time limit will apply to each speaker. Groups are to select one spokesperson to address the Board of Education on the group's behalf. Except when deemed necessary by the Board of Education due to an emergency or other exigent circumstances, information received during public comment will not be acted upon at the time it is received. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter per Board of Education Policy 2310. Grievances, complaints, or concerns related to individual school personnel or students will not be heard at this forum. Other channels have been established for the consideration and disposition of a grievance, complaint, or concern that involves school personnel or students. The superintendent will discuss with and will make available to any individual or group the policies and procedures for this purpose. Turning now to the list of people who have signed to speak during public comment. The first person we have on our list is Angela Bonds.
Good evening. We present to you the daughter and daughter-in-law Angela Bonds. My oldest child, Matthew, is a recent 2020 grad from West Stokes High School. His girlfriend at the pre-teen years, Nellie Chetney, recently graduated as valedictorian from South Stokes High School. I had tears of joy in my eyes as she was giving her speech, and I said to myself, "I can only imagine the pride her mom must be feeling right now." I learned this past Thursday afternoon. I was supposed to be that mom at West Stokes, but I was informed Friday night that, quote, "West Stokes dropped the ball." Matt went to school Thursday to get help with his transcripts, and everyone in the office was congratulating him. He said, "Thank you," he thought to himself that being accepted to Carolina was old news. After speaking with his college advisor, he learned that since the school had calculated the spring semester grades, he graduated as number one in his class. Matt's former classmate, Tessa Hatchett, was supposed to graduate as number two. When her mom called the school Friday to see how this could happen, she was informed that, quote, "We found out the day before graduation. What were we supposed to do then?" End quote. What the school should have done was made it right. How does this happen? We all know that seniors always finish the spring semester early so all grades can be calculated before graduation. West Stokes took something away from these children and their families that they will never get back. My son will never know what it feels like to walk on that stage on Senior Awards Day and receive that Medal of Honor. My son will never know what it feels like to sit up on that stage at graduation and look out at his fellow classmates and all the people sitting in the bleachers and think, "I made it." All the hard work, all the AP classes, all the college classes, all the nights being up at 2:00 a.m. to finish a project after getting home from football, all the mornings he got up at 5:00 a.m. to finish homework or go to baseball practice, all the evenings he ate dinner while working on a research paper. All of it finally paid off. Out of all his fellow classmates, he was graduating as number one in his class. He will never know what that feels like. West Stokes took that from him. His stepdad and I will never know what it feels like to sit in those bleachers at graduation with all of Matt's family and friends and say, "Can you believe it? Our son is valedictorian." His favorite cousin Josh won't get to scream, "That's my boy," as the school announces it. We all know how grandparents love those bragging lights. My dad will never get to sit at breakfast with all the other grandpas that morning before graduation and say, "Can you believe it? My youngest grandchild is graduating as valedictorian of his class tomorrow." Who is responsible for this happening? It is unacceptable. Who makes the call as valedictorian and salutatorian? Do they double-check this information, triple-check it? Does this policy need to be changed? There is no way of fixing what West Stokes took from these children, but they deserve the medals and the awards they worked so hard for. They deserve a public apology from the school, and the person responsible for this mistake will affect these children for the rest of their lives.
Ms. Bonds, thank you for your time. Your time is up.
Next is Kelsey Saltfinn? Sutfinn, excuse me.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of three children in the Stokes County school system. My son Landon just finished kindergarten. My daughter Kaylee finished second, and my oldest Peyton just completed fourth grade, their first year at Wanat Cove Elementary. And all three of them have been impacted by the changes and instability in our schools. Kaylee in particular has faced more disruption than any child should in just three years. In kindergarten, she had multiple long-term substitutes. She had three different principals. Then came the closure of Pine Hall, forcing another major adjustment. And this year, she experienced the loss of a loved teacher, something no child should have to face so young. All three of my children have absolutely loved Dr. Thower, and for good reason. Dr. Thower is the kind of leader who brings not just order and structure, but warmth, compassion, and obvious love for the students and staff she serves. She's the type of principal who knows kids by name, shows up for them every day, and makes the school feel like a family. Under Dr. Thower's leadership, Wanat Cove Elementary hasn't just thrived. All the recent change is excelled. The school placed second in the district in testing scores, which is a huge achievement considering everything the students and staff have been through in recent years. That doesn't happen by accident. It happens with strong, consistent leadership and a principal who sets the tone from the top. Through all of this, Dr. Thower has been the one steady and positive presence. She is the glue that holds Wanat Cove Elementary together. This isn't just about a reassignment. It's about the kind of learning environment we want for our children. When you have a great leader like Dr. Thower, you hold on to her. Please keep Dr. Thower at Wanat Cove. Our children need her, our school needs her, and frankly, our district can't afford to lose leaders like her. Thank you.
Next, we have Amanda Slate.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very confused at the decision to take away such a loved member at Wanat Cove Community, Dr. Catherine Thower. This is my family's first year in public school, and after pondering very hard on homeschooling, I want you to know that Dr. Thower was my reason for choosing to enroll my child in Stokes County Schools. When I first walked through the doors at WCE, she was an actual light. I've always seen her in the hallway, smiling, being involved and present. The encouragement and drive Dr. Thower has provided within a comfortable environment is the reason kids have thrived. Never did I think I would be here, fighting for what's right for our children. Children don't just learn their ABCs in school. This is where they start to build relationships. Dr. Rice decided this is what's best, while my child is behind me, asking me if we will get to tell her goodbye. If someone close to you just up and disappeared without warning, would that not affect you? When I spoke with Dr. Rice, I asked him, "Why would you swap the principals?" His exact words were, "I don't expect you to understand." As a parent who cares about my child's academics, I deserve to know what Mr. Bryan is bringing to the table, what are his strengths and/or even his shortfalls. I do understand overall numbers and bigger pictures, but the part I can't get past is taking away what's great at WCE on and off paper because something isn't working at another school. Why is the administration not being held accountable? Why are you taking from WCE instead of finding someone new who also checks all the boxes for that school? I believe elementary school holds the biggest impact for a child. Did you know that consistency in a child's life impacts their learning and development significantly? As does gaining trust and a sense of safety, allowing our children to feel comfortable, confident, and able to share emotions. To take away the most consistent thing in our child's life seems to me like the children at WCE are the last thing on your mind. And you are okay with them not thriving in these categories. Dr. Thower is not just a principal. She is Wanat Cove Elementary. The amount of students that went through changed this past year in a significant amount of the school's population. Some students lost what they know after closing three schools and merging them. Some endured the loss of a teacher, and others the loss of fellow students within the past few years. The kids and the staff have endured through all of this with Dr. Thower supporting them through it all. Yet the decision who made to take away that one consistent thing, they aren't just kids who should take a hit from you because you think it's what's best. All for what? Test scores? Scores are up, so Dr. Rice decided to penalize Dr. Thower and RWCE kids for her being great at her job. Let's think twice about the actual relationships and repercussions and consider our child's mental health. You were all here because of a child-based position, so let's put the children first. While Dr. Rice can say all day, "No one did anything against their will, and we had multiple conversations, and they wanted to." I don't believe that. Why would someone who wanted to leave make plans for rewards to students the following school year for the ones who completed a workbook over the summer? Not giving someone an option is forcing people to do what you want, and that is bullying. Dr. Rice, you bullied people into their decisions, and the way that you have done it all quick and quietly speaks volumes. You have threatened and silenced the staff at our schools if they speak up, and I hope the board does not sit by your side and think that's okay. I have so much hope that you all will fix this for everyone involved. Do I think my thoughts are going to change? No, but I do hope that while standing here, I've at least opened someone's eyes to the people leading our children when it comes time to vote.
Next is Jessica Hatchett.
Hi, I'm Jessica Hatchett. My daughter was a victim at West Stokes High School graduation, along with Matthew. I would like to start off by saying that we were never told about her ranking. Matthew posted that he was salutatorian, I mean valedictorian, and I told my daughter, "Oh, well, maybe your rank can change." We had to contact the school to find out from Ms. Ring that with a smiley face, she was number two. That's how we found out. Not only that, but Ms. Ring also lied and said that the policies, because I asked why, they went based off December, and she said that it was policies across the county. Well, she lied to my face because I called South Stokes, and that was not true. Apparently, the policy changed. I think she should be upheld for this lie. I also asked her about it in an email, about why she would lie to me regarding this, and she just said, "Dr. Jones will get ahold of you." And I said, "I'd rather you ignore me, not respond, or call me back than lie to my face." She then just sent me a message back saying, "Out for summer break, contact the office." She also said that on Friday night, they found out the day before graduation that the results were different. She could have made it right by saying something that evening to parents so we could take whatever we needed to do, but they didn't. They still ignored it once again. My daughter, I'm sorry, has spent some nights crying, night till 2:30, because not only that, but online, she was discredited by Ms. Kimberly Thompson Harrison, who gave the valedictorian, the fake valedictorian, my daughter's speech. That was my daughter's speech, who believed in Stokes County. And she took that from her by saying it was Bree Sullivan, which is not true. So once again, they failed my daughter again. And then to brag to teachers, who I have proof of, that she used ChatGPT, which is a form of AI, which in Stokes County is not allowed for students. So I don't see how it's fair that students get punished for using this, and then you have someone in your staff who uses it and falsely gives it to somebody else. There have been issues at the school where, that we've gone to Jones about teachers, and it just gets tucked under the road, homecoming issues, and this is just something else that has failed my daughter. We are very disappointed in Stokes County, to where, like I said, she's up crying. It has become a form of bullying online, where people have said mean things to her, the valedictorian and salutatorian, that were not true. It's just sad that we ask you to take care of our children and to do the right things, and you have just literally not done that. I don't know what to say, except just literally, she considered this her home, and now she will go to Carolina, knowing that Stokes County did not have her back in any way, in multiple ways. Thank y'all.
Next is Dustin Parker.
Good evening, members of the board, parents, teachers, and community members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I come before you not just as a concerned member of this school community, but as someone who has seen firsthand the profound impact a strong, compassionate, and dedicated leader can have at an elementary school. I'm speaking about our principal, Dr. Thower, someone who has become the heartbeat of Wanat Cove Elementary. Leadership in a school is not just about schedules, budgets, or evaluations. It's about vision. It's about relationships. It's about creating a place where every child is seen, every teacher is supported, and every family feels they belong. That's exactly what Dr. Thower has done and continues to do every single day. I would like to tell you about the personal impact that Dr. Thower has had on my family. We have a rising fourth grader that has attended Wanat Cove Elementary since kindergarten. It was not easy for us, for my family, to take a look at public schools as an option for us. When our son was four years old, he was diagnosed with a severe allergy to peanuts, tree nuts, and coconuts. We made these requests knowns. We were contacted by the school nurse and the nutrition specialist to determine what actions needed to be taken in the event of a reaction and what foods he could eat so that he could be accommodated for. Feeling uneasy about the cross-contamination, we decided our safer route was to allow our son to be a lunch packer. Fast forward to the second grade. Our son had decided that he wanted to buy extras from the cafeteria. We talked with Dr. Thower, and she made sure that his account was up to date on what he could purchase, and even had an incident where he purchased an item that was not on the approved list. We contacted Dr. Thower, and she acted quickly and ensured that this would not happen again, and it has not. We have all seen the small things that she has done for our children, whether it's dressing up as an elf at Christmas time and sitting on a rock waving as they leave for Christmas break, stopping to talk to us about our child or listening when we have issues or concerns, and not sweeping them under the rug. But there's something even more valuable that cannot be measured in test scores or attendance rates, and that's trust. And trust takes time to build. With staff, with families, and especially with students, Dr. Thower has built that trust. Moving her now would fracture relationships that have taken years to grow. I understand that as a school board, you do not make these changes. However, as a board, you do have oversight for the people in the district that can be determining these changes. I politely ask that the school board of Stokes County look into the changes that are happening and see for yourself if they are appropriate or if they are just another manipulation factor to make a school system and a city look better than those in the other parts of the county. We all know that change is sometimes necessary.
Mr. Parker, thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Next is Clara Marie Whitaker. Excuse me, Whitaker.
Hi, my name is Clara Marie Whitaker. Next year, I will have a daughter in fourth grade and a son in kindergarten at Wanat Cove. My daughter started her education in Forsyth County. During her kindergarten year, I saw what an involved administration looks like. That is the opposite of Dr. Thower. She leads by example. She does not ask her staff or students to do anything she would not do herself. But the question isn't if Dr. Thower is amazing. We know she is. The question is whether taking her from Wanat Cove Elementary School is in the best interest of the school community, the staff, and most importantly, the students. During my daughter's first grade year at Wanat Cove, there was a student death. Although Dr. Thower was new to Wanat Cove, she held the community together. During my daughter's second grade year at Wanat Cove, there was a death of one of her classmates. I didn't realize what pain was until I sat in a church pew beside my sobbing daughter and could not do anything about the pain she was feeling. My daughter's teachers, Mrs. Olson and Ms. Drab, along with Dr. Thower nurtured and cared for those second graders and got them through an extremely hard year. During this last year, Ms. Drab died. The entire community was left with so many unanswered questions. She was just gone. And yet again, Dr. Thower held the community on her shoulders. There is a memorial wall in the hall to honor those that we have lost since my daughter has been at Wanat Cove. We've not had a yearbook without a memorial page since she's been there. But death is not the only loss that has been experienced at Wanat Cove. At the beginning of last year, with the consolidation of schools and redrawing of lines, we opened our school family up with open arms to students who had lost their school community. Dr. Thower has made a welcoming, inviting, and loving community that took these kids in and nurtured them so they didn't feel lost or like they didn't matter, even though the school of the previous year was no longer an option. Also, at the beginning of last year, my daughter started third grade with a wonderful teacher that she quickly bonded with. Ten days into the school year, that teacher was moved to a different school, and my daughter's class was split between two other teachers. Dr. Thower and the Wanat Cove staff moved that teacher, who they had known for roughly a month, across the county to a new class, a new school and classroom, because that's the community that Dr. Thower has built and nurtures. I know that changes need to happen. I know that teachers and principals go where the need is, and I know that even if somehow Dr. Thower is allowed to stay at Wanat Cove this time, it won't be forever. I also know that these kids, this staff, and the Wanat Cove community have lost enough. Although there are so many things in this world we have no control over, this transfer, you have control over. As a parent, I would just like a year or two where my child isn't crying over losing someone. Please help me give that to her this year. Please reconsider transferring Dr. Thower.
Next, we have Erin Flincham.
Good evening. My name is Erin Flincham. I've been fortunate enough to call Stokes County my home my entire life. The last five years, my children have been part of the Stokes County school system, so I appreciate everybody sitting up here. As a parent of a special-needs child, I feel removing Dr. Thower from Wanat Cove Elementary will have a negative impact on not only the EC program, but the entire student body. As the case with most special-needs parents, my wife and I have had to fight hard for our son's needs, including his individual education plan. No one has been more of an advocate for my son's journey than Dr. Thower. EC students require extra support, love, and care, and Dr. Thower ensures that these students receive the attention and education that they deserve. I understand that test scores and numbers play a role in these decisions. However, I feel that students' emotions, mental health, and overall well-being should play a significant factor when making such a major decision involving our students. If we are wanting to build up our communities in Stokes County and keep them trending in the right direction, we can't keep taking things away from them. Taking the award-winning Principal of the Year on top of the individual person from Wanat Cove Elementary will certainly have a negative impact as Dr. Thower's care and attention goes well beyond the grounds of Wanat Cove Elementary. I encourage the board to please reconsider its decision to remove Dr. Thower from Wanat Cove Elementary as well as due to the major hurdles these children have had to overcome. Overcome, sorry. These children have lost a classmate, a teacher, and went through a major consolidation due to the closure of Pine Hall Elementary. These students need stability and love during these difficult times, and they don't need unnecessary change that will surely bring more negativity to their lives. I feel the special-needs children get overlooked in general, and I feel the decision to move Dr. Thower from Wanat Cove Elementary is another example of them not being considered when making such a major decision. With Dr. Thower, I've always had the peace of mind knowing my son and his needs will not be overlooked, and his best interests will be paramount on a daily basis. And that is truly invaluable. I have to ask, why is this move being made? What are the issues at King Elementary? I've had many complaints from the EC community that way regarding this situation. I also respectfully ask the board to investigate the issues of unfair treatment and borderline bullying of staff by leadership. If we are going to expect our students to not bully each other and act appropriately, we should also expect the same from leadership. We, as parents, should have total transparency on major decisions such as principal relocations instead of leadership pushing false narratives that fit their agenda. I appreciate the time and attention spent in the voicing of my concerns and opinions, and I trust my concerns and opinions will be considered in a professional manner and not taken in a personal context against myself or my family. I also trust that if staff members have questions or concerns, they should be able to voice them without fear of retaliation or relocation, as they are the heart and soul of our schools. Thank you.
And last, we have Claire Green.
Hello? Can y'all hear me? I'm Claire Green. I am the parent of two Wantit Cove Elementary students as well as two graduate high school students from South Stokes as well as North Stokes. I had a speech prepared, but I wanted to look you all in the eyes, and I didn't want to look at a piece of paper. While we are devastated about this decision that was made to move Dr. Thrower, we all know the truth behind the decision. She did not want to accept this position, and this is why I'm here tonight. I'm not here tonight to tell you how great she is, because every single person that's in this room already knows that. Every single person on this board, especially you, Dr. Rice, already knows that. So for whatever reason she's being moved, you're playing chess with principals. The kids do not deserve that. I have an EC student who has been overlooked his entire school years. He, for the first time ever, has been given what he needed this year because of his teachers. And why? Because the teachers were given the support and the environment they needed to be in in order to support those EC students, and that is thanks to Dr. Thrower. So again, I can tell you how great she is, but you already know that. The part that has me most upset is that she's being moved against her will. I don't know how this works in the school board. I don't have a clue, but you're making a big mistake. Also, this is hearsay to you guys, but I have credible sources that not only Dr. Thrower was threatened, but also teachers. And they were also highly disrespected when they tried to get answers from Dr. Rice. She doesn't want to be moved. She's happy where she's at. The community, the teachers, and the students are thriving. Walnut Cove, not just the elementary school, but Walnut Cove, the community, needs to keep Dr. Thrower. So I'm here to ask that it be handled and discussed on what I've revealed to you tonight about the disrespect that she has been given and as well as the teachers have been given, but also to retract the movement of Dr. Thrower. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the discussion agenda, discussion of AIG Plan revisions 2025 through 2028.
Good evening, Board. In your packets, you will see our AIG Plan revision document for your perusal. I don't have a better word. It's about seventy-five pages, so... But I wanted to highlight the major changes within the plan for you. For student identification, I'm going to give...
Ms. McGee, if you'll hold on just a second, we'll give them a chance to get out.
Under student identification, we have updated the criteria for identification. The advisory team had asked for us to tease out what does it mean to be talent development and nurturing? And so we did that by clearing that up in Stage Two at all three levels. So now we have that. Stage Two is where we have our talent development and our nurturing, and so that is the one piece that was changed under Standard One. There were no significant changes under Standard Two. Under Standard Three, we are looking at compacting more in middle school, especially mathematics content to give our kids the best opportunity that we possibly can. We're already doing that with Math One, but continuing to do that and compacting the curriculum so that they are getting all of the content they need. Under Standard Four, we are looking at... This year, we had a local licensure program where the teachers attended five days with a consultant, Marty Erskine, and they learned about AIG practices and obtained their local certification. That's the first time in Stokes County in many, many years prior to me coming to Stokes County that that had been done. So that was a great experience for our teachers. We've had a lot of positive feedback. Several have said they're going to go on and take the test so that they can get it actually on their license. So that is something we're going to continue so we can continue to build up our teachers and support them so that they can serve our AIG students, along with giving them the tools that they need. As far as Standard Five and Standard Six, there are no significant changes in those. The only other piece that I had that I was sharing was our data. And we roughly have about ten point three percent of our students that are identified in some area of academic giftedness. That's about what it should be. You're looking between ten and fifteen percent. So that is for K-12. This is not just elementary. I also wanted to point out that our students in AIG last spring of 2024 either met growth or exceeded growth. And so sometimes AIG students are some of the toughest ones to grow because they're already at that high level. And so it's nice to see that we're continuing to meet growth and in some areas exceeding growth. So at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have. As far as our AIG funding, it's salaries, so...
Ms. Bennett, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Knight?
Overall, have you seen an increase or decrease in funding or the demand thus far?
It's stayed about the same. That is one thing I would say. Our Department of Public Education and our General Assembly do well as they advocate for our AIG students. And so the funding has remained pretty much the same over the past several years.
Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, no questions.
Mr. Duncan?
No questions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. McGee.
Thank you.
Discussion of the 2025-2026 Student Handbook revisions. Dr. Rome?
Good evening, Chairman Rogers and Board members. Tonight, I'd like to share a summary of changes to the 2025-2026 Student Handbook. As a reminder of the revision process shared in a previous meeting, a timeline summary can be found in your board materials. Following the initial request for input, a reminder was sent on April 2nd to ensure directors reviewed and provided updates specific to their areas of responsibility. By April 22nd, a draft incorporating the proposed changes was shared with a representative handbook committee made up of administrators and district staff. This step ensures diverse input and district-wide alignment. On May 14th, the committee reconvened virtually to finalize revisions based on additional feedback. The updated draft is what we submit this evening and after your review seek approval at the June 16th meeting. In your board materials, you have a running list of all the changes made from the 2024-2025 Student Handbook to the draft electronic version that you received just a few minutes ago. This email contains a link to the 25-26 Draft Handbook showing the changes that are outlined in this table. I've also provided a current handbook should you want to review the changes side by side. So you can look at what's online at the link and then also refer back to what was previously in the handbook. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Ms. Cheek for her work and support throughout this revision process. Most of the changes are to the format and the organization of the information to help improve clarity, accessibility, and consistency. Some of those major changes that I want to share with you tonight, in response to administrator feedback, we've reformatted the Student Code of Conduct to reflect the structure of Educators Handbook, which is our district conduct management program, included definitions of terms collected from previous handbooks, North Carolina Discipline Reporting Guidelines, board policies, and general statutes. And we improved clarity to the section regarding placement at Stokes County Academy and transition back to the traditional middle and high schools. To assist you in your review, we've done some color coding. So the blue highlights indicate items that are still under revision, and those will be finalized and the color removed. Green highlights represent new changes for the 25-26 school year. Strikeouts and highlights are going to be removed in that final version. And the yellow highlighted areas are used for emphasis, and they'll remain in the final document. We appreciate the board's continued support in ensuring our student handbook reflects both clarity and compliance. I'm happy to take any questions or suggestions you may have before it's presented for approval on June 16th.
Ms. Bennett, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No questions. No questions at this time, but we'll see this one more time, correct?
Right.
Okay.
June 16th is our approval date.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, no questions at this time.
Mr. Duncan?
What's the driver for changing the code of conduct? What's behind that?
The feedback that we received from principals was that aligning it to Educators Handbook, which is that online code of conduct system that we have, helps to ease in their identification and being able to reference the areas where they need them. So as that shows up in Educators Handbook, it will show up in our handbook in that same fashion.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rome. Discussion of Meadowbrook Property Conversion. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, Board. In an earlier meeting, the board had asked me to get some information regarding the possibility of converting Meadowbrook Academy to a pre-K facility. If you look at the information in your packet, you can see that we would need to add restrooms, sinks, and additional exit doors to each classroom, along with ramps and steps to allow usage of the new exit doors. New sidewalks and ramps would need to be constructed as well. The playground is a cost which was not included in this pricing. If we could use playground equipment, we would, but if not, it would require new equipment to be set in place and fall protection and borders to be installed. My estimate for that, depending on the amount of equipment and type, would be about a hundred thousand dollars. That would bring our estimated total to that project of just the pod turnaround at four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. As I noted in your information, these costs only cover adding classrooms to the pod. The main building has a concrete pad, and while it's possible, it would be expensive to convert the sewer drains to allow these rooms to be used as classrooms. The engineer did include estimated cost to paint the building if we were to use it for administrative purposes. If anyone has any questions, try to answer them.
Once again, Ms. Bennett?
None at this time.
Ms. Knight?
Did you say that this only shows the pod, not the actual, you know, main structure of the building?
That's correct.
Or potential pre-K at that Meadowbrook location?
Yeah, that's just for the pod section, not for the main building, because that main building is built on a solid concrete pad. It would be a lot more expensive to put in the sewer drains through that pad that would be needed. And really, there's only two sections of that main building that would be suitable for classrooms anyway.
I mean, it was previously, you know, classrooms. Is it... What would be the need to increase in toilet facilities or...
Yes, increase in toilet facilities and an increase in exit doors.
Due to the age being pre-K and like state requirements with...
That's correct. And these plans, of course, were drawn up by Peterson Gordon Architects.
And the one proposed cost, or we just have the one cost?
Yes.
That involves the...
Yes, that's the cost for converting just the pod, but that's without the playground cost involved.
And is there room there for playground equipment and whatnot? I mean...
There is room. We have a five-acre facility there. There is room for that, but we would have to look closely at the distance from the pod to the playground area. We may have to get into grading there to move the available space closer, a level space closer.
And remind me again, what was the proposed cost? Because I think prior to this, we were discussing... It had been brought to the board about moving Central Office to the Meadowbrook facility, right? What was that cost associated with that?
To move...
I mean, to make it into office spaces in that conversion. Sorry, I don't have that in front of me or...
No, ma'am. I'm sorry. I don't have that in front of me either, but I can get that for you.
It was, I think, one hundred fifty thousand.
It's one neighborhood, but I can get that for you.
I'll have more questions, but no more at this time. I may have other just follow-up questions about capital stuff in general, but I'm done with this one at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, the facility there... Am I reading it right? We made these changes would accommodate about a hundred and twenty-six children?
Yes, it could accommodate a maximum of a hundred and twenty-six kids, yes.
And Dr. Rice, how many do we have in pre-K in that West District?
I'm looking to Dr. Lamont to do some quick math.
So that would handle...
So it would be at sixty-five percent capacity?
Something like that, yes.
So are we thinking that if we did this, that that would handle all the pre-K for that West District?
Yes, yes, sir, it would.
And that's kind of how we're looking at it is...
That was one of the potential options for that site, was to do all of the West Area pre-Ks in that one location.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Follow-up question. You mentioned architect drawings. Could we see those? I know it's not in this right here.
Sure, yes.
Or this proposed?
Yes, you can see those drawings where he mapped out what could be possibly used for classrooms. Yes, I can get that for you. I can share it with all the board members, yes.
Okay. And maybe just a follow-up question. I think we hit on it last time. As far as, you know, I've got, you know, further community concerns in regards to the playground equipment at Pine Hall. I know that some were going to be offered up to groups or, you know, community-based groups maybe, or either they could bid on it on Gov. deals.
That's correct.
But it would be repurposed in some sort of way, correct?
Yes, it'll be offered up for resale on Gov. deals, yes, to anybody who's willing to bid on it.
And I, you know, I just reasonably so, you know, think there's just concerns at the appearance of how things are right now. So what do you foresee as a timeline for getting the whole area just looking better?
We can get that area, the playground area, straightened up in a matter of a week, probably. Get all that taken care of.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do know that, for everybody else's knowledge, the playground equipment is in pretty bad repair, and we're afraid it's going to not make the transition of removal, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that all the previous equipment had been, that was in good condition, went to all surrounding Stokes County schools, right?
Anything that was in decent condition, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Duncan, any questions?
So make sure I understood right. We've got about eighty pre-K kids in that West District. Certainly like to have some more conversation about it. I mean, you're looking between over half a million for everything, correct? If I'm reading that right.
Yeah. So if we spend a hundred thousand on playground, yeah.
And I know we've talked about, you know, moving Central Office. I mean, I don't... Until the county tells us to vacate the courthouse, I don't see why we'd move. That's just my one-fifth opinion up here. It would be interesting to see some more information on this before, you know... I do agree that it'd be nice to get all of that under one roof. How would that affect... So pre-K is currently at King as well, correct, or...
King, Poplar Springs, Pinnacle. Well, Poplar Springs, we're moving to Mount Olive, so it would be King, Mount Olive, and Pinnacle in the Western District.
So how would that look at each school when you take those from a enrollment and capacity standpoint?
Well, it would remove thirty-one kids from King right now and sixteen from Pinnacle and sixteen from Mount Olive. So one classroom at Pinnacle and Poplar Springs and two classrooms from King. Is that correct? Yes.
So two classrooms from King and one from Pinnacle and...
One from Mount Olive. One from Mount Olive.
Okay. That's all I've got right now.
Okay. The only thing I'll say is my one-fifth, it's hard for me to stomach $500,000 to affect 80 kids at $6,250 per, per student currently enrolled. I, I don't think that's good stewardship of the taxpayer dollars for, to put them in pods, because that's not including the transportation cost, because those students are currently transported to other schools in their vicinity. So now you've got to reroute transportation for all 80 kids. So there's a, a larger expense than that. So, thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Yes, sir.
Discussion of ice cream bids.
Good evening, Board. It's that time of year where I got to go through all of my contracts, make sure we're all good with those. We're allowed to roll over a contract up to four times for a maximum of five years of service with the company. Any price increase with those contracts has to be under the CPI food away from home, which as of February 2025 was 3.7. Fortunately, looking a lot better than it did last year. Hershey's is still over that, and so we had to rebid that. We sent out an RFP. They currently provide our ice cream sales, they also provide our cooler, our freezers, and any maintenance on those. Hershey's was the only responding vendor as, in prior years, and so we're just looking for approval to enter into a contract with them.
Are you needing that in the form of consent for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Discussion, Ms. Bennett?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions.
Mr. Duncan, do you have an ice cream cone opinion?
I'm just thinking what happened to Chocolate Scooter, because it's 19% increase there. This is the happiest thing we've talked about.
It really is. And it's just so funny looking at these numbers, because even a couple cents, it's like looking at my milk bid. One penny going up on a carton of milk is a huge percent, and so that's what we see with the ice cream. It's really a minor increase per case, but it just, when you look at it percent of units.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
You're good. I like the strawberry scooter better, but?
There you go. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll put it on consent for the next meeting.
All right, moving on to action. Approval of personnel and coaching. Do you have a motion to approve personnel and coaching?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Approval of federal grants.
It is that time of year again, so tonight I respectfully request your approval that I need added to the minutes that I may, on behalf of Stokes County Schools, apply and submit our federal grants for the 25-26 school year.
Okay. Any discussion?
How many grants and what do they mainly pertain to, as far as just an overview?
These are our federal grants for Title I and Title IV mostly. Those are the ones that I, I have an application that must be created, and that will provide the money to each of our individual schools, our Title I being our elementary schools. And our Title IV is the money that we spend for our music and our PE and our art and all the wonderful things that we have because of that money.
So all grants that directly, you know, in the classroom affect the students and their day-to-day activities and offerings, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, and Mr. Duncan, thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Approval of budget amendments?
Okay, you have Current Expense Fund Number Eight, Amendment Number Two, increases the budget by $1,300. It's where we've received some donations from Duke Energy and the Rotary Club for the Career Day. You have Current Expense Fund Two, Amendment Number Three, increasing the budget by $570 is for use of facility and also some revenue from DHHS. You have Estate Budget Number Two, increasing the budget 149 to 75. This is for additional allotments for driver education, read-to-achieve bonuses, and our resource officer grant. Then capital outlay, Budget Amendment Number Three, increasing it 2,698,84, just adjusting the cents on sales tax refund, and also where we sold some stuff on gov deals. You have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Moore?
No questions.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you second Ms. Bennett?
I did.
Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Information and announcements, Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Board members and those that are in attendance and online, I want to remind the public that our next meeting will be held on June 16th. That'll be a regular session at the central office in Danbury. I want to also remind you all that we have canceled our June, July 7th, excuse me, work session, so we'll only have one meeting in July, and that will be the 21st of July, and that will be a regular session. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. With that being said, Ms. Knight has kindly reminded me, on behalf of the Board, we want to thank you all for coming out. We appreciate your input, we appreciate your passion, and we hear you. So at this point, Ms. Knight, would you like to say anything? Or any of the other board members? Just as, as a thank you.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, we can't, we can't go into personnel.
Just a sincere, you know, thank you for coming out. I know it's not easy to speak. I mean, this is kind of an uptight, stuffy setting. I mean, right? I mean, board meetings are not typically, I know, a fun thing or place you guys want to be on a, on a Monday night. Obviously, you know, there, there is a lot of passion here and concern, and, you know, I appreciate you all coming out and sharing very much. Thank you.
Ms. Bennett, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just similar to what she said, as being on one side of that before, thank you all for coming out, and we appreciate it, and it's good to hear opinions. And, you know, having kids in school, I understand where you're coming from, so thank you all.
Mr. Robertson?
Same here. I just want to thank everyone for coming out, and I totally understand the love here for Dr. Thore. I totally get it. I was at the Wannecove Elementary Bingo the first night that Dr. Thore walked into the school, and I think I was probably one of the first ones to go over and congratulate her on her new job. And Dr. Thore asked me over a couple of years ago for the first day of school to help to welcome the kids and get them out of the car. They had the Drum Line there from South Stokes playing the drums, and it was a very exciting time, and Dr. Thore was running everywhere around the, the school. And I said, "Dr. Thore, you're going to need a nap." And she said, "For an educator, this is Christmas Day," when everybody came back to school. I gave the dare speech for the past three years at Wannecove Elementary, so I totally get it. I've had a good relationship with Dr. Thore and know that she is a very special lady, and I understand, I understand the passion that everybody has for her, and it's well-deserved on her part. And I do thank everybody for coming out tonight, the, the speeches, the comments, the heartfelt, we hear them, we understand them. The Board, this, and to make sure everybody understands, this was not a Board decision. This is an administration's decision. They have the leeway to, to move principals as they see fit. And, you know, we, as a Board, I don't think we've had the full story at this point. Hopefully, we'll get that soon, but, but I do understand where you're coming from, so thank you all for coming out.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I'll echo everyone that's already spoke, but I do thank you for being here to advocate and to speak out. I mean, as a parent myself, you got to fight for your youngins, and I think the biggest takeaway that I, I took from the speeches is to make sure that, two things, that we handle things correctly, and that, you know, trust, I think it was, I don't know which, Mr. Parker mentioned that trust takes time, and that's not just from a principal standpoint, but from the top down and, and including the five of us. And so I thank you for taking the time to, to be here, and as has been made mention, I, I would like to personally understand some more things, not just in this situation, but others. You know, as, as a Board member, when I, when I ran for, to be on the School Board, there was things I thought I could do that, that once I'm on here, I realize I can't, if that makes any sense. It's out of my control. The big things that we do as a Board is to set the policies, to do the budget piece, which is never fun, because it seems like we never have enough, and to hire and fire the superintendent, which we hold him accountable, and, and from there down, that's, that's his responsibility. And so a lot of the, the specifics of, of the things that I would love to see changed or, or even modified, some of those things are out of our hand, not just even from a local standpoint, but from a state and federal standpoint. It aggravates me even with the school calendar, and I mean, you know, we, we can't even set that with so much. And it's, you think that you could. I've heard a lot of times, you know, where's all the lottery money going? And until I got on this side of it, I didn't understand that. And so, but I appreciate you taking the time, and for the ones that wrote us, you took the time to, to write those emails, to advocate for your child or for your school, and, and the thing is, we just, I think people want to be heard, and I, I hope that, you know, we hear you, or I, I can't speak for the entire Board, but I, I believe we're all in agreeance here, we hear you. And so I do appreciate you being here, and as I said in, in the prayer that, and that is my prayer, it's not just words, I, I do ask for guidance and wisdom, that we, we make the right decisions. So, thank you all again.
And to close it out, again, thank you for coming, but also for the two West Oaks families. We're sorry, we found out about it this past Saturday morning at 5:09 a.m., because Dr. Rice emailed us at 5:09 a.m., because he had, he, it was weighing on him. So he let the Board know. We can't spend back time and correct it, but what we will do is I'm going to offer up a Board meeting. We will be happy to recognize those two students. We will publicly put it on all of our social media accounts, our websites, and we'll do everything we can to make it right. We can't undo the wrong, but we'll do our best to make it better. So with that being said?
That was just past Saturday.
Yeah, this past Saturday, the 31st, as in like, two days ago, at 5:09 a.m. is when we found out about it. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to return to closed session pursuant to General Statute 141, 143-11, or 318 dot, dot, one, dot, one, A1, 3, and 6.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back and closed. Thank you all again. Drive safe going home.